All right, I'm going to call this meeting to order. May have a motion to approve and accept this agenda with an amendment to item 7D. Personnel report as recommended.
Motion.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the five of the United States of America. And to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, peace, and justice for all.
Okay, before we get started with acknowledgements and recognitions, I'm going to ask board members to take a moment to look over our five guiding principles and the associated norms that go with those, thinking about specific agenda items, especially, I think about our 10-year academic and facilities plan, but thinking about where's a norm you want to focus your energy this evening? All right, thanks for your attention to that. Try to keep that in the back of your mind tonight as we make our way through this. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Pruitt for acknowledgement and recognitions this evening.
So, very happy to announce that five Ankeny Community School District students have been announced as National Merit Scholarship Corporation semifinalists. Ankeny High School seniors Serena Cassidy, Benjamin Colby, and Jackson Riddakers. Congratulations. And then at Ankeny Centennial seniors Joshua Lee, Emily Conger are among the approximately 16,000 semifinalists in the 71st Annual National Merit Scholarship Program. Congratulations, very proud of you, and good luck.
Wow, congratulations. All right, we're going to move on to communication from the public. On behalf of the board, I'd like to invite Sherri Hawk to step to the microphone with comments about items of interest or concern. Please begin by stating your name, and thank you for limiting your comments to three minutes so we can keep the meeting moving in a timely fashion. We ask that you remember Iowa law prohibits us from discussing specific employees, their job performance, or individual students. This board meeting is being livestreamed and recorded. The recording of this meeting, which includes your comments, will be maintained on YouTube for five years. Thank you for your support of our school district. Sherri.
Thank you. Sherri Hawk, and of course, I live in Ankeny. Just, I recently read in the Des Moines Register, as I am certain you all did, that Forbes just released their seventh best employer list, and Ankeny Public School District, as you all probably know, was 11th on that list, which is kudos, because I think that was out of like 1,400. And so, that speaks very highly of everyone here and any participant in this experiment we call the schools, our school system, because they're all, everybody's obviously doing a good job. Some bases for these determinations that they made included wages and work culture, professional advancement, and how seriously specific issues or several issues were addressed. The Register also covered the introduction of the $130 million bond issue that's coming up, and how important passage is to our community. It was a little concerning at the last paragraph when it mentioned what might happen if the bond was not approved, tax rate volatility, potential gaps due to maintenance that is reactive instead of really preventive, and falling behind on some needed upgrades. So there are some concerns if we don't make sure that Ankeny people are on board with this. And what might leave us in a more comfortable position overall is a much higher percentage increase in the state supplemental aid, SSA, one that actually provides resources required to keep our public schools strong, and all of our kids, all of our students on the road to success. And we have been struggling through measly 2% averages, average increases for decades, and that's not sustainable. It just isn't, not with our inflation, especially the way it's going. Let's do everything we can to ensure that at least a 5% increase through our state legislature and assure that our tax dollars are going to public education. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherri.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to the consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items as recommended?
Motion.
Second.
Do you have any questions about what we see here? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to information only, we're going to start with item A, with an Envision update. And Dr. Pruitt?
I'd like to invite our partners from Envision up to present the latest update.
Thank you. We're here to present kind of updated renderings. Just to update you where we're at in the process, we're almost through design development, which means we're about 70% through the design process. So today, we're going to show you some updated renderings of things you've already seen, but also highlight a lot of the educational spaces that maybe you haven't seen renderings of yet, because we're just kind of working through our process. So, quick floor plan updates, really nothing has changed here. As you'll remember, there's kind of a north bar and a south bar that are our primary program spaces. Over 70% of the floor plate is used for educational kind of classroom spaces, and really the center core then is for kind of gathering and collaboration spaces. And as we move up into the second floor, kind of similar program and similar arrangement that you'll see, but really no major changes in the floor plan. Just to go back over kind of exterior renderings, as I said, not a lot of changes here, but here's your view from Ankeny Boulevard as you look south at the schools. You can see kind of those bars on the north side where all of our classroom spaces are, but really highlighting kind of that center spine space. As we get a little closer to entry, this is the sidewalk here that will take you back towards the stadium, so the sidewalk that will take you back to the west. You can see kind of entry here, and then also this kind of highlighted area of kind of community gathering spaces, but kind of veiled on the edge for security and for solar control. So here's that view straight from the east, looking west from South Ankeny Boulevard. So you can see here, there'll be an image on the kind of side of the building. That's something that the district's still working, kind of what that image is, but generally kind of a screening to prevent solar control, but also warm up the exterior. Here's that sidewalk. One of the big things we've talked about here is bus drop-off, so there'll be significant queuing for bus drop-off along the north side to allow students then to kind of approach the building in a safe manner. This will also pick everyone up if people park over by the stadium parking and bring them to the building. And then lastly, here's the view kind of looking from the south. So you can see kind of those trees implanted, that's really protecting that yard space so that outdoor kind of active space outside of all of our big lab spaces screening that. And then a new rendering as we kind of swing around to the west side of the building, where we do have kind of selective ag plot space over here, you're seeing greenhouse programming kind of on this side of the building. So just highlighting some spaces, and then in the distance, you can start to see some of those build yard kind of lab spaces for activity to spill out of the building. But I'm going to let Danielle take most of the time today to show updated interior renderings.
Yep, so we're going to go through a series of interior renderings. While it's not a comprehensive of every single space in the building, it does give a good sampling of what type of space types that we do have that support each of the career pathways. This first view is your welcome space, so this really serves as the main entry of the building for students, teachers, and community partners. And so while it will have the same levels of security as the rest of your district buildings, it also does have a little bit of an updated hospitality entry, and we're hoping really that signals to the students of the different type of learning that does happen in this building, and also sends that message to your community partners as well. When you pass through that welcome space, you enter a community gather space, and so this is really meant to support medium to large-scale trainings, large group events. It is adjacent to both food service and the culinary lab in the building, which, you know, we've talked about the synergies and how those programs can help support community events that happen here. There is technology infrastructure to support different types of presentation modes and This is on the second floor in the center space, so just kind of right up from that community gather space. And this is really meant to just show the transparency into all these different lab types. We want that learning to be on display. We want students to be able to see what's happening in classrooms that maybe they're not in. It also highlights that there is individual and group collaboration spaces that happen as an extension of the classroom. So when kids can, again, extend out of the classroom, but also the instructors can maintain that visibility when kids are outside. This is what we're calling a typical flex classroom. So we have a series of small and medium classrooms that are distributed throughout the building that are really, they're not owned, and they're just kind of, as the name implies, they have the ability to flex as the curriculum flexes. And so there's adaptable movable furniture in each of these rooms, there's the technology infrastructure in here that's, can support anything as learning adapts. This is highlighting one of our beyond spaces, that program in the building is kind of set up as an instructional space in the center, but it has a series of vignettes around the perimeter to support life skill development. So you're kind of seeing a highlighted kitchen and laundry zone here for those students to work on those particular skills. And again, there's a few other vignettes that support different, different learning. Here, you're looking at your nurse simulation lab. This room is set up with kind of a series of eight beds along the perimeter, some instructional space, and also a mock exam room. So again, students wanting to head down a health sciences pathway, this is really kind of that real-life clinical setting that they can expect to see when they move on to secondary education or career. Info solutions, again, this classroom's set up for kids to work only individually, or is it kind of groups of four that have kind of screen sharing capabilities? A unique feature to this space is kind of through the glass doors beyond is a mock server room. So for instance, cybersecurity classes can really mock up a cyber attack, for instance, and be able to simulate that in real life and how they do it. So we always want to initiate mock server room, not the same as the building. This is a robotics lab. Again, each of these rooms will have that adaptable movable furniture to be able to meet students' needs, but there's always going to be that flexible power, tool storage, and in the foreground, you know, you're seeing the robotics arena for students to be able to do demos and try out whatever they're creating. The fashion and design lab, again, this is a really tactile lab, there's a lot of tech space in here for students to pin up fabrics and materials, the idea that they have a display window there for visual merchandising, again, accessible power, and some equipment around the perimeter to support that program. This is a series of two different kind of really ag research labs to support that program, both plant science, animal science. While they do have the greenhouse and ag plot outside, this is kind of that indoor elevated, more collegiate level research lab. And here, you're seeing one of the applied sciences, like high base spaces that are on the south side, this is the build lab. And so while there's a lot of floor space to build inside, we can highlight those two doors beyond the sheds spill out to the west, and there is kind of a dedicated outdoor build space too. So when weather allows, again, that can really flex indoor and outdoor and support even larger projects outside. Here, you're looking at your welding lab and advanced manufacturing. After working with this staff in this group, they really talked about the amount of synergies between the two programs. So visibility and adjacency was really important. So while we have, it's kind of that glass box beyond, you're seeing all the advanced manufacturing machines. Again, out here is the welding booths around the perimeter, and some, there'll be flexible welding tables and equipment in the center of the room. And last, we want to highlight specifically, this is another one of those flex classrooms, so, but its unique attribute is it's got a connection to an outdoor secure learning lab. So we heard a lot of exciting things from teachers, like could we bring an ambulance for the week and work with the health sciences students to be able to understand what that looks like from an ENT standpoint? Or could we bring livestock? We heard from Ag, we don't know what that looks like yet, but is there, we have this secure outdoor space, but we hear these great programs and these ideas, and how could we then bring kids to another space and allow them to flex and have that equipment infrastructure come help support whatever is being taught? Do you have any questions for us?
I have a question, and I don't know if you can answer it or if it's answered on this side. Can you explain the importance of the like opened classrooms, of being able to see what's going on inside of a classroom by others, or you know, what's, just the importance of that?
Yeah, I think specifically in a building like this, we heard that students need to be exposed and see all of the potential pathways that are out there. I'll never forget, I think it was the kickoff night, you know, students said they want to discover their genius here. We can't expect them to be able to understand which pathway they want to take out of a course curriculum book. And so visual connections between, and also letting people know that you're, none of us work in an isolated profession, you know, what I do in architecture has very much so to do what's being researched in product development and the build lab. And so making those visual connections between are really important, so people understand all of the activities going on in the building.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I don't have a question so much as just a comment. I've just jotted down a few things that stood out to me in the design, and the first one is flexibility, which I think is huge for just ongoing changes and evolution of how we're teaching and what types of pathways may emerge as ones that we have to pivot to, and so I really appreciate that. And then I also like individual and group spaces. I think that is absolutely the modern workplace feel as well, and we have to be able to do both, so I like that. And then I really liked the realistic education application, like the hospital room or clinic looking setting. So I just think those things really point to the difference between this building and maybe more traditional or existing buildings that we have today, not that there's not some of that in those buildings too, but I, you know, those are kind of some of the reasons that I'm super excited about the innovative hub, so thanks for sharing them.
Other comments or questions?
From my brain, I don't know if there's something, just, I don't know if we could do it just for us, I don't know. If there is any way that we can take like what we have now, like that building layout, and then do like the overlay, it's like this is what it looks like now, like here's the building, here's the parking lot, here's what it is, and this is what it looks like new.
Yeah, just an overlay over the North View site so that you understand kind of the size and scale and scope of it.
Yes.
We could create a little overlay site plan.
Basic, simple, yes.
We've gone out.
Is that on this, I don't know.
Is it on this, I swear I just saw that, is it on the slide deck tonight, like an overlay of how it fits?
Good job.
I didn't see it on this.
It's coming.
If that doesn't meet your needs, well, we can come back to it.
Okay. So I'm like, I didn't.
I think it's helpful sometimes to just go stand out in that parking lot too.
Because I'm like, I'm watching and I'm looking at it, and I'm like, I just don't see this.
It's coming up. It's hard to visualize sometimes.
Okay.
What's next?
Yeah, so really, we have about 30% design left, and the building that you see is the building that you're going to get at this point in time, but the last 30% is really all of the details. We have one more price check to go through with stall construction, you'll get a price check in December here, that, so this will come back to the board in December at a price check, but really, the last 30% is all of the details about how the building goes together, the final coordination about structure, mechanical systems, all of those things, all the materials, you know, the things that you touch. And so the last 30% is really our team digging in and finishing the drawings.
Perfect. Thank you. I think every, every time it gets clearer and clearer, and so we appreciate your willingness to come back and keep us updated, and I know I agree with Steph, I think really seeing those various lab spaces really juxtaposes how this is different from our comprehensive high schools as they currently exist, and I'm looking forward to the next presentation because I think we have a lot of data and reasoning that supports why there's a need for this in our community. So thanks for setting that up for them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. 10-year academic and facility plan, so I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Pruitt.
Thank you. And so I'm going to ask board members to save your questions until the end. I know they were going to be providing a lot of answers to some questions that we've been getting over the past few months, but I just want to make sure that the questions that have been asked get answered, and then any additional questions that you may have, we'll answer them here. And so, over the past 10 months, we've been sharing this vision for how to expand and improve opportunities and experiences for our Ankeny students. The 10-year plan serves as a roadmap to build a future of choice, opportunity, and success for all students. And I want to really emphasize that this 10-year plan is for kids and not for any adults, it's for our kids' success. And so we've had the opportunity to present and gather feedback from groups across our community, including the Ankeny Chamber, Rotary, ABI-C, Lions Club, at the Farmer's Market, Ankeny Democrats, and Northside Republicans, and we were at Summer Fest. Based on those conversations, this feels like the right time to provide some clarifications and address some key questions we've received. The information we're sharing today continues the updates we've been providing to the board on both facility planning and academic programming. At the heart of our discussion is this essential question. How do we ensure our students' educational experiences equip them with the skills to make meaningful contributions to our community? And so our objective today for the next 15 or so minutes is to provide an update on the long-range plan addressing student programming and facility needs, explain our strategy for using general obligation bonds as a reliable funding mechanism for major district projects. All of this plan looks 10 years ahead. Today's focus will be on questions and projects tied to the 2025 general obligation bond. And I want to acknowledge that there are many factors still to consider before final decisions are made regarding 2029 and 2033 projects. However, we already have a clear understanding of how the 2025 GO bond will affect the debt service levy, and more importantly, how it can positively impact student opportunities and experiences. At its core, this plan represents smart, forward-thinking investments that help our students thrive and strengthen our community. By planning proactively, we avoid costly emergencies, create better opportunities, and ensure that our schools remain a source of pride for generations to come. To guide our conversations today, we'll highlight three planning drivers for the 2025 portion of the long-range plan. They are the value, need, and cost of this 2025 general obligation bond. And with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Dipmar, who will begin by discussing the value this plan brings to our students.
Good evening. I want to reemphasize, the mission in our district is to engage all students in an educational experience and to equip them with the skills to flourish in an ever-changing world. This mission guides our strategic plan, pillar number one, which talks about rigorous and relevant academics. In addition, you heard the motto from Dr. Pruitt, of our 10-year goal is to build a future of choice, opportunity, and success. So we believe that this innovative programming in this facility will value our students and our community. Our vision for the academic programming for our secondary students is aligned to Iowa's career and technical education model, which you see here on the left, and you've seen this model before. But that model is also aligned to the National Career Cluster Framework, which you can see here on the right. The programming that you see, that we are recommending to you, recognizes the high skill and technical requirements of current and future careers, which not only includes academic programs of study, but is also going to include work-based learning and student organizations. So I just want to take a minute to introduce you to the Modernized Career Cluster Framework, and you all have a copy at your seats, and I know the print is hard to see.
Where's the magnifying glass, Amy?
In this framework, what you will see is five of Iowa's career technical education areas, which are there in the middle of the circle. The one thing that's different between these two frameworks is that there's a cross-cutting cluster on the outside circle. So you'll notice around the national model, which I'm being told is going to be adopted by Iowa, is that the cross-cutting careers is in that gray circle on the outside. This overlaps, these careers overlap in all industries. It also highlights the interconnected nature of today's workforce. So these careers can stand on their own or be integrated into all other career clusters, so that one cross-cutting cluster has marketing, business management, entrepreneurship, project management, data service, AI, just to name a few. This further emphasizes the importance of adaptability of our students. So this is the Modernized Career Cluster, just in a graph form. And what we've added is the program of studies that we're recommending for our students in those boxes. So you may have heard of the 1-2-7 rule. This rule's being seen in the American workforce today, and it means that for every 10 careers, one requires an advanced degree, two require a four-year degree, and the other seven require something else, like a credential that demonstrates a skill. This rule and these career frameworks guided our team's work last year as we developed the program of studies for our innovative hub. With extensive input from our internal stakeholders as well as external stakeholders, from both the field of education and from the workforce and business and industry, we believe these programs listed that you see here by career cluster will provide experiences for every student. will provide experiences for every student as they engage in executing their post-secondary plan. This comprehensive approach is designed to benefit our students in the workforce. We are often asked the question, is this just a tech school or just a trade school? Or for skilled trades? And the answer is no. The hub will allow us to expand our programming so that every career will be represented throughout the district, whether at the Innovative Hub or at the Comprehensive High Schools. We also need to offer core learning courses, such as ELA, math, science, and social studies at the hub, so that we don't create barriers for students and within their master schedules. So it's going to be more than just a skilled for skilled trades. In order to have specialized, hands-on learning in multiple career fields, we need unique lab spaces that we currently don't offer, that you saw in those renderings tonight. This vision encompasses a wide array, a wide array of critical learning fields, such as health sciences, robotics, and applied sciences that are vital for our students and our community. One data point I'd like to share with you this evening is from SchoolLinks, which you know is our career planning platform that we use with our students beginning in sixth grade. What we are learning is not all paths are leading to a public or private university, and we believe we have to have programming that must reflect this diverse reality. We have a proven track record of being successful in preparing our students for community colleges and four-year universities, and we're going to continue to do so. But in order to meet the needs of all students, we need additional programming and facility space to meet their varied aspirations. So how do we know what programming to offer? What will the implementation plan look like? We continue to look at data from our students and from trends in the workforce to help us plan for these expanded opportunities. As you can see here on the screen, we pulled some data from SchoolLinks from our seniors from May of 2025. And this provided us feedback on their top five career pathways that they chose. One thing to note, the second career pathway is STEM. That, that category includes the building and moving career cluster that you see on the national model, which includes engineering, applied sciences, and manufacturing. We are working within, with SchoolLinks to align our language with the career options that are in the Career Cluster Framework. With the addition of the Innovative Hub, we'll be able to expand diverse options that are designed to meet the needs of these expressed interests, which also meet the demands of the workforce. And just for fun, I pulled data from our sixth graders all the way up through our ninth graders. Cause if you think about our students, our ninth graders will be the first senior class for the Innovative Hub when it opens in 2029. All of the, the top three career areas for all classes from sixth through ninth graders right now are health sciences, STEM, and then the other one is communications, which I think they just all want to be.
All want to be YouTubers.
Influencers.
They all want to be Samantha.
So this programming pipeline ensures exploration will begin at the middle school level and evolve with students as their student interests and curiosities change. As we work with our partners at Envision Architects, we are clear about identifying programming first and then building a facility that's designed to match the space that we need to match these career pathways. Envision has been focused on designing space that is adaptable and flexible as needs change over time. Another question we often get is, how is this space different than Orbis? And the answer is, we currently offer three courses at Orbis. One focuses on design thinking through a project-based experience. One focuses on exploring multiple career pathways. And the third course is Teacher Academy. These courses will continue to be offered and can be held in a flexible learning space at the hub or at the Comprehensive High Schools. The hub will be able to offer a wider variety of course offerings that are aligned to every career pathway. As we consider expanding programming, we're also in the process of identifying staffing needs and developing a staffing plan. Before we can determine teacher-staff, we must first identify what's going to be the implementation of this program plan. The program of studies vision that I've showed you earlier will be phased in over time. Once we know which courses we're going to offer, then we can identify our staff. Just like we have done with the opening of other new facilities, we will first review our current staff from across the district to see what positions can be reassigned to the hub. We do know that we will need to add support staff positions, such as custodial and nutrition staff, just like we have with every other facility that we've opened. I just want to take a minute to recognize our strong partnership with DMAC. This partnership remains strong and integral in providing these opportunities for our students. Representatives from DMAC have been involved in the action teamwork and have been at the table during the development of the program of studies. It's important to remember that we teach high school students, and DMAC specializes in college students. We will partner together to make sure that we have opportunities to meet the needs of our students. The career academies at DMAC have been very beneficial for our students. For example, as I noted in the SchoolLinks data, Health Sciences is the number one career academy that our students attend at DMAC. But DMAC offers seats to their students first in those health courses. And then if there's space available, then our students are able to enroll. By expanding course offerings in the district, we will believe we'll be able to meet the demand. Another question we often receive is what will we do if the bond fails? If this bond fails, we will not be able to meet the post-secondary plans of all of our students because we won't have the facilities to do so, which simply means we will not be able to properly train the workforce of tomorrow. And with that, I'd like to invite Dr. Hawk up now to share with you the facility space needed in order to bring this programming vision to life.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to share some information about how the plan, especially the facilities plan for the general obligation bond, is going to meet the needs of our students that Dr. Dipmar just, just outlined. So Director Northway, here is your overlay of, of the site at the Northview Campus. So as you all know, the district investigated several different sites for the location of the Innovative Hub. And each of those sites had positives and negatives that went along with it. At the end of the day, the Northview Campus was the only site that we looked at that provided a centralized location between our two high schools so that the students have easy access during the day to get to the courses that they need to attend there. Because of that centralized location, it also is in a place where our whole community can see, you saw it in the renderings that Envision showed us tonight, can see what the hub is and be excited and proud of the work that we're doing to serve our students through there. Also importantly, this is the only site that had access to the infrastructure we need that allows us to begin construction immediately in the spring of 2026, so that we can open this facility up as soon as possible for our students. And most importantly, this site at Northview actually allowed us to expand the footprint of the building a little bit to better serve the needs of, of the students. We get some questions about parking because obviously we're building, the building on top of an old parking lot at Northview. So this site is going to allow us to replace a parking lot that obviously needs to be completely replaced anyway. And by moving that parking lot to the west, it allows us to actually increase the number, the total number of stalls for those big events that we have. And also keep the parking closer to the stadium for, especially those football games that, and, and we have band events and lots of other events at the stadium that draw a lot of people. We've received some questions of late about the capacity of our secondary buildings and how the Innovative Hub project is going to impact how we utilize our other schools. You may recall at the, well, last spring, that we had Envision present on a study that they did over the course of the 24-25 school year, taking a look at how we use all of our secondary schools. And not just looking at the total student capacity, but also how each of those buildings actually serve the students within that building. Things like the cafeteria size, general classroom size, office space, those types of things. And what we learned is that our four middle schools have ample space to serve as six, eight buildings well into the future within, for our district. We are planning on some renovations out in the future to ensure that they all equally meet the needs of the middle school programming that you just heard Dr. Dipmar talk about, especially that exploration of these career pathways that we've been working through. We've also, of course, looked at the capacity of our two high schools because we often get the question of, will we have room for the ninth graders if we bring them back into the Comprehensive High School? As you know, by bringing the ninth graders into the Comprehensive High Schools, we reduce the transition for our, our middle school students by one, which research told our committee that was working on this several years ago, that often those transitions, especially in early and mid adolescence, are something that it takes at least a year for students to recover from academically. So reducing that transition was really important for us. Having the ninth grade back in the Comprehensive High Schools also helps us be more efficient because instead of having our, our high school classes spread out between the eight, nine buildings and our 10th through 12th grade buildings, we will now have those high school courses in the Comprehensive Schools and shared with the hub. You can see from the chart on the screen that having the hub operate at the capacity that it is planned for will provide plenty of space in our Comprehensive Schools, even with the ninth graders involved. The secondary study also looked at the general best practice for specific areas within our schools, such as the cafeterias, again, classroom spaces, office spaces. And we use the data from that study to address the most critical discrepancies between best practice and, and what we have. And that is why our plan with the general obligation bond is to add those rehearsal and storage spaces for our music courses, to update some of the science classrooms, especially the labs, as we bring ninth grade learning in and as that curriculum changes. And then have the additional space for our athletics, for PE, for cheer, and dance added to those high schools. And as Dr. Pruitt stated at the start of the presentation, we are going to continue to look at the data from that secondary study and measure, again, where we are, where are the discrepancies as we plan for future bond referendums out in 2029 and beyond. We've also received some questions about how we plan to maintain the building. And as you know, our strategic plan states that all of our students will have the opportunity to learn in collaborative, dynamic, and secure environments. And it is our daily goal and the operations team to make sure that our students and staff have safe and secure spaces to learn in. So maintainability of the hub space has been one of our driving design factors from the very beginning. We're kind of excited because the hub design as it exists today actually reduces some of the grounds maintenance that we have to do at our, at the current site. And with any new building, it means we're getting, we were just, they left. We were just talking about the mechanicals, the systems design, those last 30% of the design. We know that those will be far more efficient than our, than our older buildings. And so every time we can bring in new systems, that helps us to be more efficient overall. So again, the question, what do we do if the bond fails? Dr. Dipmar already did a great job of talking about the fact that we don't have the types of facilities that you saw in those renderings in our Comprehensive High Schools. In order to add those would be a very expensive construction job. And then we would have those split out across two different facilities instead of one. So without the, without having the Innovative Hub, without having this bond issue be successfully passed, it will be impossible for us to offer the types of programming that, that we're talking about tonight. The failure of the bond would also mean that needed updates in our existing schools would be pushed off well into the future. A great example of that is the parking lot we already talked about. Anyone who has parked there recently knows that it needs work. So with the general obligation bond and our plans to build that new parking lot, that is something that we can use then. Those dollars could be used in our, in our existing schools to replace things like HVAC, roofing, windows, and so forth. So without the general obligation bond, that work would get pushed into the future. And quite simply, without the general obligation bond, Ankeny schools will not be competitive with other metro school districts. So we need to have that commitment to improving our facilities and most importantly, meeting the needs of our students that we've been talking about tonight. So I'm going to now turn it over to Mr. Brown, who's going to talk about the cost.
Good evening. Before I get into the cost side of things, I want to preface that everything we're going to talk about here from a property tax standpoint is based on current law. It's kind of not a matter of if, but when the new laws will come into effect. And as they do, then we'll have to update and go along with that to make sure our plans are going forward from that side of things as well. So with that, looking at the overall property tax formula side of things. I'm going to spend a lot of time on the left side, the district side of things. But just kind of wanted to go and give a brief overview as to the different entities that are involved in the property tax formulas, from the state to the county to us at the local level here. The state dictating based on law as to how the formula works. The county looking at the assessed value of each property. And then us at the local level, the district, looking at that and saying, okay, here's what our property tax rate is going forward. Our current property tax rate for overall, for the FY '26 year is $16. For this presentation, we're going to really look at the debt service side of things. And right now, our debt service rate is $2.45. And we have committed, I know you guys have committed as well, to not going above that $2.59, which, which was it, which is what it was in the fiscal year of '25. There have been a lot of questions regarding, okay, if the general obligation passes, what's going to happen with the overall, with, with the debt service tax rate? Right now, the debt service tax rate is at $2.45. The reason that's $2.45 versus $2.59 is that this is the last year of all of our principal payments for all of our current general obligation bonds. So we cannot levy more, any more dollars than what we currently have outstanding. And so that's why it's at $2.45 versus $2.59. Here in this visual, you can see kind of what current property owners are paying today for the debt service levy, from $200,000 up to $500,000 property value. With here as well, we're looking at not doing additional tax for the debt service levy. Again, looking at that $2.59 for the debt service levy within there. A strategy that the district has used over the years is to pay down our current general, general obligation bonds or pre-levy from the property tax world. So over the years, since '22-'23 school year, the district with pre-levying, paying down additional general obligation debt, has saved the taxpayers about $1.5 million over that time period. Something that we will continue to do into the future and something that we'll make sure that we're doing so that we can save property tax dollars as best we can. One question that we have received is, can we take that money and then put it to other funds? Unfortunately, no, we can't. State law prohibits that to making sure that it's just for the property tax debt, or sorry, the general obligation debt within there. I would love to be able to take this money and use it for additional staffing, additional benefits and within. But unfortunately, we can't do that. The other side, the other strategy that we have used to pay down debt is for future growth capacity. What I mean by that is essentially making sure that over the years that we can go out and bond debt into the future so that we, there, the state has certain limits and so that we don't hit those limits and we can keep, keep on maintaining and looking for future planning as we look at programming and facilities for the district in whole. Another question that has come up is our interest rates. Why would we pay off early current bonds at certain rates for potential new bonds at higher interest rates? Well, over the years, are the bonds we paid off have been anywhere from 3.8% up to 5%. Current bond market right now, this could change, so don't hold me to it, is that right now it's in that 4% range. So we're right in the ballpark, as it's been over the years, for the bonds that we currently are paying off has been anywhere from 2015 to 2018. And then now looking into the future as well. So we're in that same interest rate environment that we've been over the past 10 years or so. A visual that I've liked to use over the past few months is kind of where we've been and where we're at today. Over the past 15-ish years, we have paid or reduced the overall property tax rate by $6.35. Within this visual, it's kind of new, I like this idea, is that each star represents a new building as we've gone along the way. We have had to add building consistently over the years. And you can see we had three consecutive years of opening new buildings. But even during that time period, we've been able to lower the overall property tax rate and making sure that we're fiscally responsible and that we can maintain with what we have going on.
Yeah, I keep looking at that. The first thing that came to mind for me was with each one of those, we had to add additional staff. Like there are additional things beyond the facility, and we were able to maintain that while continuing to bring down that.
Absolutely. So looking at additional staffing, additional utilities, additional maintenance costs and everything within there as well, absolutely. Here's another visual that we like to show every once in a while, not to show how good we are, but to kind of give an overview as to where we're sitting within the metro. We want to be, we want to. We want to be, we want to make sure that we're fiscally responsible, but also making sure we have the best programming, best facilities that we can offer for our students for now and into the future as well. I believe I went over this slide probably 15 times over the past six months or so, but kind of wanted to give an overview as to the debt service side of things. Really what we're talking about is the general obligation bond. Currently, in the third column there is our current tax rate for the debt service levy at $2,045. For fiscal year '25 is at $2.59. So making sure of committing to that $2.59 to making sure that the plans that we have, the general obligation bond, the future facilities, all the different things within their meat within that $2,059, plus the future bonds of 2029, 2033, if they follow suit within that timeframe as well. Okay, so again, same type of question. What happens if the bond fails? Current reality is, as of June 30th, 2026, all of our principal debt will be paid off. So what does that mean? Our current $2.45 rate for the debt service levy will go from $2.45 down to approximately 50 cents. And that 50 cents will continue into the future for the next three or four years, primarily due to interest that we can't pay off early, essentially. So that will also, if we don't get a yes vote in November, that will be, all future general obligation bonds will be a property tax increase. Right now, it's a property tax maintaining versus a property tax increase into the future. So as Dr. Dipmar said previously, the purpose of this bond is to meet the post-secondary plans for our students from a program and a facility standpoint with properly training the workforce for tomorrow. At this point, I'll turn it over to Samantha for future communication.
All right. I just want to update you on something that I'm sure you're all very familiar with, but our efforts to drive voter awareness. You may recall this slide that was presented in May on the efforts that we were going to pursue, and what we really looked at doing was a multifaceted approach to communication. We know that people consume information in different places, and so we wanted to meet them where they were. So this involved earned media, print, social media, but it also involved going out and meeting voters where they are. So a lot of community events that Dr. Pruitt started the presentation with listing. So I just wanted to share some of the results with you. This is not comprehensive, and as I was sitting here, one data point I did not collect was how many presentations I've created since March. But we have presented this at more than 50 community organizations, including at the farmer's market and at Summer Fest. And Thursday, that number will go up as Dr. Pruitt presents at the Alba Senior Center in town. We have also earned more than 33,000 views on social media. Just to give you an idea, we have 14,500 parents that we can email in our system, so our social media views are almost double that. But what's even better is that has converted into nearly 2,000 clicks to our website section from those 33,000 views. There was one other point that I, oh, we've successfully placed eight media placements on it as well in the last six months. So again, that's just some of what we've seen, and I can certainly go down a data hole with you if you would like, because it's very interesting. But our intention going forward is not to turn down our efforts or just stay steady. Now we'll ramp up, and those results were all earned over the summer when our parents are not here, but they're here. And if you made it back to school without your principal talking to you about this, you're an anomaly because I know that the principals were out there working and sharing information with families as well. And so we'll continue that going forward, and we'll do our best to make sure that every voter on November 4th has a general awareness about what that is, what the bond is for. If there is anything that a community organization or a space that you're in and you are hearing that people don't have that information in that space, tell us who it is, where it is, and we'll go there. So that is all that we have for you tonight. What questions do you have for our team?
So, you know, we're really moving and I think picking up from where Samantha left off to kind of the second phase, right? We've kind of got the signatures, and so now for us, it's really thinking about what information. I know we've received a lot of questions, and I think this is an opportunity for us to discuss publicly the feedback we're receiving, the questions we're getting, and as we communicate with constituents, we can continue to have clarity around, I mean, already in both of these, I feel like there's a lot of great information for us to be armed with to go out and talk to folks about. So this is really the opportunity for us to turn it over, ask clarifying questions, and even some tough questions if they're still lingering for you, so that we're able to go out and be strong advocates for this as well. So I'll turn it over to any director.
I'll kick it off maybe quick and just say thank you for the presentation and hearing the questions that we submitted, because I feel like every single one I asked and forwarded and shared from community members was answered. So thank you for that. I think I, we are still not getting to everyone, and I can imagine how impossible of a job this is Samantha, for you and your team. And I am shocked a little bit sometimes when I hear people still say, what? What's the geo-bond? What's the innovative hub? I'm like, where have you been? But the reality is, not everybody in our community has school kids. Not everybody is going to the 50 meetings that Dr. Pruitt has presented at. And so I guess I just, for those that we're not getting to, and the reason I'm concerned about it is I'm concerned that there's a decent group of people that we're not reaching yet that don't have enough knowledge to vote yes. And so just want to ask, how might we pivot to reach these people who are not maybe connected in our normal communication channels? And then what can we do to support you guys and your efforts as a board?
Absolutely. One thing I want to help put into perspective, I looked up the last school board election, and there were under 13,000 votes in that election, and that was a record turnout for school elections. And it's also not representative of the number who voted in the rest of the election, right? They just, this is the number of people who filled out our page, right? So as you keep that in mind, we experience that too, and we're going to keep trying because even if they don't vote on November 4th, we want them to know what this is about and how it impacts them. But the portion of people that are actually going to vote is probably smaller than what we're going to try to hit with our communications. Additionally, in this next phase, we'll be sending out a direct mailer to every house in Ankeny. We've been saving this because it's costly, and so that will hit, it'll include a submission form or a request form for an absentee ballot that they can tear off and mail back into Polk County. And so that's a strategy that's been really successful to help reach those households as well. I would say a lot of our efforts over the summer have been to reach those voices who we don't already have access to. It's really easy for us to blanket our parents with information, and I know that you feel this, depending on how many kids you have in our school district, we can get ahold of you guys. We've really focused our efforts on reaching who else. So again, if there's a, if there's a group, if there's someone listening and you'd like to invite us to your organization, invite us, we want to be there. But as you're interacting with folks, we, not all of our meetings, not all of those 50 meetings had 100 people at them. Some of them were a 6:00 PM rotary meeting with eight people, 12 people at it. So we are happy to meet individually, we're happy to meet on a broad scale. Of course, we invited the community to a forum as well, and so we're going to keep trying to reach all those voters. Just know that we're not turning out 70,000 people, as much as I would, for democracy's sake, love that on November 4th.
Thanks, Samantha.
Is there an appetite for another forum now that it's getting closer to the election?
We're willing to have another forum. I think that the reason we were able to have it over the summer, we were just looking at schedules, and then with the level of activity of our kids, typically when our kids are in activities during school, we see decreased attendance at some of the events we may hold, but we'll explore it.
Because about how many, how many people were at the last forum?
There were 12 that were not district staff.
Just as all that were there, 12 that were not the district staff?
Or a school board member, yeah. Sorry, I took you guys out.
I am looking back at when Samantha presented at the end of April about our, first about our communication strategy. I had bolded in my notes the things that the board was going to do. So we have passed the resolution here at the table. I believe we're trying to get the editorial to the Des Moines Register. And one of the last things we had talked about was us setting up a schedule individually or in pairs, varying times of the day, and sometimes on the weekend where we would just have like open chats for folks or whatever. So I think that's something I'm, I can work with stuff to try to set up, even if we just each committed to doing two, you know, over the course of the next couple of months. I think that's reasonable, which allows us, I think, to perhaps get to folks who are speaking to us that we can circle around to and say, hey, you know, I know you haven't heard much, would you like to come? Not just you, I guess, is what I'm saying.
I think it's that, like, meeting people where they're at, kind of a thing. If really had 12 people come in the summer, sorry, can you hear me? Does my mic work? Can you do a live stream or a podcast, you know, or something like that that people can tune into on their way to work or whatever type of a thing?
There's lots of podcasts.
That we can forward onto them.
We just recorded one today, in fact.
There are a lot of podcasts.
Answering hot questions. It was a good practice session for tonight. So when that, that one should release, what month? It's September 15th? It should release in the next couple of weeks here. So yeah, share that. Thank you.
Data, your clicks, did you say you have the clicks to your website, to the webpage for this?
The clicks that I shared were purely the clicks received from social media, but I can pull the number of people who viewed that page.
Do you know how many are going to the website or the webpage for this?
I have that information. I didn't pull it up before I came.
Okay, I'm just curious, how many are actually?
Google Analytics changed its format on me, so I have to phone a friend.
Darn Google. I'm just, I'm hoping that more people are going to the webpage to get the information. It is, it's wonderful. I mean, because we have it all there.
We, so one thing we do track every month is the top viewed pages on our website, and they're, most of them are what you think they are, right? Like, we're getting a lot of clicks to Infinite Campus, to the calendar, to the meals. But one month, we got the Innovative Hub in the top six, and we were really proud. That was hard to do.
I appreciate the, at the beginning, talking about how having every career being offered and being competitive and standing out, because that is something that Ankeny has always strived for. So it's a very longstanding tradition, and it's something that I would like to see us continue to do so. And just being a status quo is not something that we should be doing. We need to continue to be the best. So let's do that. Let's continue.
Other questions?
I had a couple. Erica had a clarifying question for you. I need you to restate the slide that talks about if the bond fails and like property taxes could increase if we go for a geo-bond in the future. Can you talk me through that again, just so I'm like prepared with my talking points on that one?
Absolutely. So if the bond does not pass in November, then starting in 7/1 of '26, the debt service levy portion of the property tax will go down to about 50 cents. So essentially, that will be a reduction of about $2. Any future bonds that we want to go for will be an increase to that tax levy rate.
To that 50 that it dropped down? So it dropped down to 50, and then it would scoot back up to where we would say it would have been in the past had you passed the geo-bond?
Assuming this current laws today, yes.
Thank you. I just wanted that clarifying.
Well, I got you up there. If we could go back to the slide, I'm going to ask you clarifying questions just because I want to pick up where Sarah left off. I want us to be able to answer this question. So you had talked about paying down early had saved the $1.5 million.
Yes.
Talk about how it saves that for us specifically.
Absolutely. So that essentially, since we pay off debt early, we are not going to bond into the future. So, sorry, not bond, we're not going to levy into the future. So all of our debt we paid off as of June 30th. So if we were not doing this, essentially, those principal debt payments would continue on into the future, essentially continuing to lower that levy rate down until it's zero from there. So we have pre-leaved and kept it at the $2.59. If we did not pre-levy, instead of $2.45, it would have been $2.30, $2.20, $2.15, and so on and so forth, until it's fully paid off at that point. But we would have paid an additional, or we'd have to levy additional $1.5 million over that timeframe to then pay that debt. By paying it off early, we have saved the taxpayer dollars of about $1.5 million.
Director Barthol, I just want to clarify something. So if the bond, the bond fails, the debt service levy goes down to 50 cents. If the school board decided to go for a general obligation bond, the debt service levy would be dependent upon how much the general obligation bond would be for. So we just can't say that if it goes down to 50 cents, it would go back up to $2.59. It depends on how much we would be, we would be going to the community asking for.
Okay, that was good clarification.
And if I'm understanding, sorry, this is all so complex and way over our skis, or my skis, anyway. So are you saying, like, for example, if we needed more money in the future because we delayed some investments now, and so we'd have to ask for more, that is what would indicate that it would be more than $2.59 because we'd have to make up the difference?
Correct. So we've done iterations of assuming this bond passes, and then we come back in 2029 for another $130 million, we'd be able to stay at that $2.59. Say there's projects that we wanted to do that would go, we need another $80 million. That essentially would push that $2.59 up to $3.30. So depending on where that dollar figures comes in, and then the flip side of it is where the assessed value is at at that point in time, based on the current formula within there. So all of that dictates as to what's going on. So there's a lot of moving parts to say, okay, we're not necessarily going to go to the $2.59, but what is it that we're looking for and how do the valuations play in there?
And so that, the 10-year plan that we presented with the 2025, projecting to 2029 and 2033, were all based off of the calculations that, and work that Mr. Brown did with our, with our bond.
Our financial advisor.
Financial advisor with regards to how much we would be able to go to the community for without going above that $2.59 debt service levy over the next 10 years. And so to Director Barthol's question, if it fails, it goes down to 50 cents. And again, this addresses one of the questions around fear mongering. No, we're not fear mongering, it's just reality. If it goes down and then the community is telling us that they want newer facilities or upgrades, we would have to, our preference would then be to leverage the general obligation bond, which then would dictate the debt service levy for that bond.
And I just think what we can buy with $130 million now, it's not going to get cheaper. So the best time to do it is now. It's going to be the best, best way to stretch to the dollar. Other questions that we've got here?
I have a couple.
Yes, please.
Sorry. You sleep at best for last. First off, if the bond doesn't go approve, will we have overpopulation on the schools?
Good question.
So if the bond fails, then we would have to, my team would have to come back and think about the recommendation for moving our freshmen to the high school and converting our middle schools to sixth to eighth grade. And so we'd have to come back and just rethink that. Yep. Because it all, having the innovative secondary facility allows us to bring between 500 and 750 kids to the central location throughout the entire day, but then all that frees up space for our freshmen at those facilities.
And my other question, maybe a little rhetorical, but on your slide where you talked about the post-secondary plan, it said that in 2025, 56% of seniors are on the four-year college plan. I'm assuming you probably don't have, but do we have any idea of how many of those actually stay through the four years where? Where, and I have a reason to ask this.
For that data point? Not yet. But we can get that data because they're just entering into their colleges and universities at this point.
Yeah, so I would, in my last update, I put the link to that, I have post-secondary readiness in my last leadership update. I would encourage you to go out and look at that. And it will tell you, I mean, it's going to be, it's going to be six years old because it's looking at a six-year graduation rate. But that will give you a very good idea of what we start at with how many actually graduate.
And I think my point is, is I think something like the Innovative Hub is an advantage to those students who don't know what they're doing to be able to not waste their time and resources on something they don't have the passion, want, or skills to do. And they would know more. And, and, and I think like as a parent, that would be such a gift to me and my, my students, you know? And that's kind of what my point was with that, is that that 56%, I, I, you know, and I know you said that I didn't look, but I could just...
I don't expect you to have it memorized, I just want you to know you have a resource available to you.
It was more of like, you know, showing those students, I mean, we talk so much in society or in America about student loan debt. Boy, this could really help that, couldn't it? And have the people still be their own responsible, so.
Yeah, and that's why we want to start in, at least in sixth grade, right? So you can just excite them and give them opportunities to explore all the way as they go through our system, before they actually engage in the career pathway that they choose once they get to high school.
Thank you.
Hey, Amy, you got a question?
First of all, just, and I should have, well, you were up there. Just, I want you to just clarify that we have nothing to do with your home valuation.
Correct, so let me go back to this slide here. So that is correct, so the assessed value is dictated directly by the county assessor. We cannot control that side of things. What we can control is the levy rates that we control at the board table through our certified budget from that side.
I just want that on the record, they don't ask us for guidance, they don't ask us, they just set it themselves.
That is correct.
Okay, great, just wanted that on the record. The next thing is, I haven't got this directly, but I did see it on social media. And I think this happens a lot when we are boxed in on how we can spend money. So can someone just answer the question, why is this money not going to salaries or lowering class sizes?
Absolutely, so let me get to the correct slide. So that's basically dictated how the state sets the property tax formula. So when we're talking general obligation bonds, it is strictly for that, paying the debt, the principal and the interest for that debt that is obligated to the district. When we're talking staff salaries, benefits, additional staff, that is dictated based at general fund, which has a state formula, which is set by, everything is set by the state from that side of things. So there's nothing additional we can do to move money from one fund, whether management, PEPAL, or debt service, to help with those additional costs for additional staff salaries, additional benefits, new staff to the district, everything in between.
So to nutshell that, anyone listening, it's literally against the law to use geo bond money to pay for salaries and lowering class sizes. So that is why we can't do that. And then I don't know if I'm getting too granular, but I just, other districts around the area come to Orbis. Are we opening this up for kids to come for just one or two classes? Or are we gonna, they have to enroll here full-time if they want access to the hub, what does that look like?
I think yes, eventually we would like to do that. I think it's an enrollment strategy. We do have agreements with partnering districts for Orbis and other courses.
Yes, they have to open full-time or I guess they can open for individual classes?
Individual courses. So for example, our agreement with North Polk is not only for ag, but we also have AP music theory, some other things that they don't offer, we offer. And so students come here to take those courses. So I think yes, long range, we envision opening this up to other districts. How soon, I don't know that we know yet, until we see what we're offering.
Thank you.
Dr. Dimar, while you're up there, I had a question. One of the questions we've got is like, you mentioned the DMAC, like students can go to DMAC and you mentioned that there's some students not being able to enroll in those career academies because it goes to DMAC students. Like, are we having significant wait lists right now that you're seeing? Like how many on average students are we having to turn away? Just so we have that context, you know?
I need to pull that data. I apologize, I should have done that prior to night, I mentioned that prior to today. Of how many kids are requesting, let's say the health career academies, for example, how many are making that during their course request, registration time? And then how many are actually enrolling in it? I don't have that data, but I can get it for you.
I've been thinking a lot about both Orbis and DMAC, because I think that's a question that's surfacing. Like we, these needs are already met, why do we need the Innovative Hub? And I think, I think I'm just experiencing this as a parent a little bit with a, my first one going to college. You know, it's not a competition with DMAC programming. I think if we can build quality high school programming, it sets kids up for more success at the college level. So it isn't a competition, but how can we build more background for them so they can be successful if they choose to go to DMAC? Or, I mean, some of them will be DMAC courses, but what are some of the, I'm going to use the word prereqs, but that's not really what it is, but some of the foundational skills, how can we build those out in our own programming? So kids aren't dropping out, they're successful, they've got the foundational skills to be successful. And, and with Orbis, I mean, I think Orbis predominantly is project-based learning. I mean, there's, there's teacher academy and then that investigative of other things.
Current exploration development.
Yeah, this is, this is much more, I think, professional-grade labs, equipment, industry-focused, very different. So I think that's a, a talking point, I think we need to be able to squeeze out a little bit ourselves in our conversations with folks.
I should go visit Orbis one day and then look at the renderings that we just showed and you'll see that there's a very big difference between the programming and just the opportunities that they can give.
I think the other thing that needs to be considered, there's a cost for our kids, our children going to DMAC also. Right, so it's not a free service that's being provided by DMAC. And so if we can absorb some of those costs ourselves, we believe that we actually might save the district funding.
Speaking of cost, Eric, this is probably a question for you. A question I've been asked is of the money that we're asking on the GO bond. What is it earmarked for, like how much money is going to be towards the Innovative Hub and the facilities? Do we have the breakdown of kind of how we're?
I'm going to pass that to Dr. Hawk.
Perfect.
Short answer is yes, we do. It might be easier for me to get that to you, so I'm not trying to show a big spreadsheet.
So the, the short answer is yes. We, and is also embedded in the petition question that the, that the board approved. And so the petition question allows us to not only build an innovative secondary facility, but then it also allows us to build the practice spaces for our fine arts programs and storage space, upgrades to our visitor side of the stadium, the baseball fields that we've talked about, the parking lot. And so there, there are some specifics. We know that right now with the hub, we're looking at $80 million for the Innovative Hub. And then, I think I used enough time for Dr. Hawk to come up with it. The exact figure.
So we know that the, the hub itself is, is going to be 80 million. The renovations at Ankeny High School and Ankeny High School, which are the classroom renovations that we talked about, some of the music additions and some updates, like in the auditoriums and things like that, we have about $11 million between the two schools allocated for that. The baseball and softball turf at the two high schools, those fields, we've allocated about $3 million for each of those projects. About $7 million at the stadium for needed updates, for some bleachers and storage and things like that. And then about $13 million at each high school for the athletic cheer, dance, PE centers that we've talked about.
Yeah, if you can send that breakdown, that'd be good to have.
Would it be possible to get this slide? I really like this chart. Could we get another column of allowable uses for those funds on there? I know, I know, this, this particular chart, I know we have like that graphic that we've seen from ISB with like your different funds or whatever. But I'm thinking about this chart specifically because I think it helps answer that question that Amy talked about that we are getting. Like, why aren't you using this to reduce class sizes and salaries? If, if we could just get another column that says what those are, a breakdown of what's allowable uses for those funds that are associated with those? I mean, obviously that's insurance, like I understand what management is, but what are the allowable uses might be helpful, I think.
Absolutely, I think we can put that together and we'll keep it at a high level because with general fund, there's a whole lot of stuff there.
I get that.
Absolutely.
I get that, yeah, I'm not, it's not exhaustive, but just at a high level, I think, would be helpful.
I have one clarif, one other question if I can, Eric, while you're up there, is the pain for the staff. I know we've gotten a lot of questions about that. We know a general obligation bond cannot pay for the staff, cannot decree. I think maybe a byproduct could be reduce class sizes if you, you know, shove people into the buildings. But paying for the staff, because let's say we, I'm going to just for easy numbers, we have 100 students today and we still have 100 students when the Innovation Hub opens. Where do you get the money to pay for the staff? We know we need the custodial, but the teachers that are going to be in there? Because essentially, you move some people around, but where do you get the money for those additional staffing?
Yep, that's all dictated based on the state funding formula. And then our break-even spending that we've talked about within what we can do, our credit card limit essentially, what I've said, mentioned before in the past. Making sure that all of that matches and with what we have going on within the current district and making sure we can support it into the future. So when we talked about our unspent authorized budget, making sure we're getting that in the right direction, which we're able to do as we closed this past year. And making sure that we can pay for those different things and then also using, within the general fund, our cash reserve levy to make sure we can pay for that side of things as well. And so that's all dictated within the overall general fund side of things, from the state aid to the property taxes to miscellaneous income. Sorry, getting into the weeds on some of that stuff. But how all that stuff plays together to make sure that we can support that, those new staff as they come on board. I know Dr. Dimar talked about a little bit earlier of phasing different programs in. And so what we're looking at year one versus year four, five, and making sure that it fits within everything that we have going on from there.
I think another way of thinking about it, Director Barthol, is if you think about those career clusters, and we've talked about, we know we don't have health sciences, we know we don't have agriculture. But to Dr. Dimar's point, you know, we will be phasing in different courses that we want to offer. And so we do know that we're, we're going to have to hire at some point staff for health sciences. We know that, how many? We don't know yet. It's actually going to be dictated by our seventh graders this year, who will be our sophomores in 2028, right? We know we're going to need staff for our agricultural, agricultural courses. But we're also looking at, you know, where are some other alternative ways these courses might be taught with people that are currently in those careers? And so that's yet to be developed. But we know those two that we don't currently have, we will need eventually. With the other courses that we're offering at both comprehensive, comprehensive high school, schools, this is a way to consolidate resources with bringing certain staff to one location. That way we're not having to be duplicative with regards to the number of staff that we need at both high schools. We know we will need a certain amount of nutrition, nutrition staff. We know we will need a certain amount of custodial staff. We've met, we've yet to determine how we're going to approach the administrative function of it. However, we currently have an administrator over our Beyond and Summit program. We have an administrator over our post-secondary programming. And so there are some alternatives where we may not necessarily need to hire or fund a new administrator. We've talked about more innovative ways to get the Ankeny Foundation involved in looking at supporting programming, potentially staffing at, at the hub moving forward. So again, health sciences, agricultural work, staff we know will need, custodial nutritional staff we know we need. But then we're also going to be using staff, like the five other times we've done since 2013, we're taking staff from our two comprehensive high schools and bringing them to the hub. Will they, will some staff have to travel? Maybe, staff are traveling now. Will they be reimbursed for mileage? Yes, staff will reimburse for mileage now, so those things won't change.
I think, you know, Sarah, I appreciate that question a lot. And I, that's why I really like that slide, because I, like, for me to answer that question is, like, of course we're planning for staffing. Do I know the nitty-gritty details of it? No, because we have no idea who's going to be enrolled in it, right? But I do have a lot of faith in administration that's showed over the last 15 years that they're capable of planning for this. Sometimes I get a little like, ooh, when I hear that question, like, oh, we didn't think of that, thanks for that question. Well, of course we're thinking about that, you know? Like we're, we're running a almost $200,000, $200 million business around here. We're thinking about all the things that go into that, so.
Well, and I think just to the staffing really quick too. I'm on a committee with Jody and one other person, and we've only met a couple of times and we can't do a lot, right? Like we've tried to, we've reached out to some other districts across the United States that have done this to understand how they have approached staffing from an innovative fashion. And it is not going to be the same as how we staff other buildings. But until we know the exact programming and how it's phased in, it's kind of hard for Jody to even start thinking about, how am I going to staff these buildings? When we just don't know that yet. So I think there's, there's work being done is my point in sharing that.
In a sense that's possible at this point in the game.
At this point in the game.
I know we've asked this before, but historically, how have bonds fared with the school district?
The last several bonds have been for elementaries and they've received above 70. The last one had 78% approval rate. The last secondary bond, and this is relying on a memory that is storing a lot of other details in it. I think it was 67% approval for the Northview renovation project, which would have completed in 2015, I think. But I can't remember when that bond was, maybe, maybe 2013. So I think that one was 67%, but let's confirm that and send it to you as well.
Okay, has any bond ever failed?
There's certainly been bonds that have failed in the past, some very notable ones.
I can remember, but I was, somebody told me that they said that this would be the first one to fail and failed. And I was like, I don't think so.
Certainly not.
While you're up there, are we continuing, and I guess maybe wouldn't answer this, looking at partnerships with the businesses in town? I'm going to say sponsorships, I don't know if we're going that far, but getting other revenue that's coming in to help us cover the costs.
Yes, that work is underway. Identifying strategic partners specifically for things like consumable materials that'll be needed to conduct these courses. And there has been a lot of excitement around that with the business community. I think that's probably about as far as we're ready to say right now. But we, yes, we've started those meetings already.
And I'll just reiterate, there is, so Dr. Dimar and I, two weeks ago, met with an organization and there is considerable interest in supporting with consumables and other resources for our programming and the Innovative Hub.
As you can imagine, a lot of those conversations are waiting the outcome of November before proceeding.
It's just, I just want to make sure it was an avenue we're still pursuing, I guess. And then I guess my next question is for Amy. I know I asked this a while ago. Are we looking at partnering with like the Googles of the world to build in certificate programs? So our kids are leaving possibly with a certificate from a Microsoft or a Google or something like that.
Do we recognize credentials, anyone?
Yes, that's definitely the goal. How can we get our students credentials so that they can either A, go right into the workforce, or it launches them onto the next step in their career plan? Yes, that is something that we are definitely considering.
So I'll step over into my job a little bit. The state has an approved list of those and it feeds into our school report card, what percentage of your kids are receiving those. So that's already.
The workforce, yeah.
Yeah, already happening in lots of places. What other questions do we have?
I guess have a, you have a question? I just have a statement. I think today you guys really displayed that you've really well thought out every angle on this. And I'm very proud that, of this presentation and what you guys have done, because there's been a lot thrown at you with questions and everything else and you guys have always come back with thorough answers. So I want to say thank you.
Yeah, and anybody else?
Yeah, I'll say thank you as well and thank you for, I know you've got feedback throughout the process and continuing to listen to people, continuing to take that into consideration, adjusting if you need to. I just really appreciate all of that. And the four of you did a fine job, you must have rehearsed. You must have rehearsed a lot today. So just thank you very much for your detail and presentation and continuing to just adjust as we move through this process.
If there is a way that you can, like, take this school board meeting and just shorten this snippet that we can easily share when people ask, hey, what can we find out about this geo bond? Because I've heard nothing about it. We can just share this link.
I heard a podcast is coming.
I heard there's a podcast coming. I think there was, like, some informative meeting happening at some point. We can just share it and then answers are here, just a thought.
I think it's our job to meet people where they're at. And you guys have done a wonderful job meeting us where we're at. And we appreciate this, this partnership. I agree, Amber's, with Amber's sentiment. To me, this just shows that you're really listening. And I think that builds so much trust with us and with the community. And I think, well, I'm sure sometimes you have internal groans with the questions that we send. I think it makes the product better, what we're, what we're absolutely getting out of this. And so thank you for the time and energy that you've all put into this. So what's next with this, Dr. Pruitt? When can we expect another update?
So when's our next envisioned update?
December.
December.
Yeah.
Yeah. However, as Samantha said, I'll be at the retirement home this Thursday. Director Berg, we have our principal for a day event on October 23rd. And really excited for all of our business leaders here in Ankeny and in the metro that will be here to be a principal for a day. Really thank Mr. Morris and his team for designing that day and the, and the experiences that they'll have. Again, this idea of family and community engagement, this is our way of engaging our community in a broader way to give them a peek behind the curtain with regards to, you know, what does it actually take to be a principal? And what do they experience on a, on a daily basis? And then they get to hang out with our wonderful students and staff. And then they get to hear me talk and brag about our district and eat some of Jeff's show, Jeff, Chef Joe's wonderful food and hear me brag about the district. And so that will be some opportunities for me to continue the conversation. And then some of the ideas that I heard here tonight, you know, we'll take into consideration. As Samantha said, we just completed the podcast answering tough questions about two hours ago. That'll, that'll come out. We'll get the snippet of today's board meeting of our, at least our presentation and questions that were asked and push that out to the board members. So you can push that out to people that, if you're getting questions. But the, the questions that you ask are needed because we want to make sure that if there are any unanswered questions or missing information, we want to get it, you know, to the community, to our voters, to make informed decisions. I can't tell the community what they need. All I can share and what my team can share is what we think is in the best interest of our, our students and in the future of our district.
And we will update FAQ?
Yes.
In some capacity? Yeah, yes. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thanks.
All right, let's move on to item C. We've just got a number of minutes here. So item C is facilities and finance committee minutes. D is policy committee minutes from August. E is our monthly financial update report, starting that new fiscal year. F is donation receipts. G, we've got board member committee participation reports. Anybody have anything to share?
I can talk about policy. In our September policy meeting, we, the policy team's doing a really good job of cleaning up with some rhetorical information or forms. So there's a lot of cleaning that up that you guys will see, I believe, next month. And just doing some outdated, unnecessarily extra forms for, like, in Rowan and other districts that's already on the site, so we're removing those. So doing a really good job. I want to repeat what I said last time is I think we have a really good committee that's asking some really good questions and really helping us to have good policies.
Good.
Any additions?
No, you did it great. We had facilities and finance last week as well. And Darren did a nice presentation, as did Eric, to educate the committee and kind of get everybody that foundational knowledge around a lot of the things he shared tonight even. So I think we're off to a good start and also have a great group there asking good questions, too.
I did receive a nice text from somebody thanking us for the thank you cards.
I also got a text about that.
And so I just can never thank people enough for the time and commitment that they give to folks. So I appreciated that. So thanks to the district that took time, the staff that took time to send those out. Anyone else? All right, item H, contracts and agreements at the building level under $10,000. Any questions here? All right, let's move on to old business. Item A, contracts and agreements. Can I have a motion to approve and accept the contracts and agreements as recommended?
Motion, second.
Any questions about these? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item B, construction change orders. May I have a motion to approve and accept the construction change orders as recommended?
Motion, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item C, policy, our second of two readings. Can I have a motion to approve and accept the policies second and final readings? As recommended, policies are for immediate implementation upon second reading.
Motion, second.
Any questions about these? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item D, can I have a motion to approve the Manning-Severt Mechanical Contractors, Inc. of Granger, Iowa with a base bid of $278,779 and award contract for the Northview Middle School boiler replacement project as recommended?
Motion, second.
Questions here? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Let's move on to new business. Item A, the amended employee contracts. Can I have a motion to approve the amended employee contracts as recommended?
Motion, second.
Any questions here? My ask in the future on these, and I meant to include this in my email to you and I forgot, is can we see the, just the redlined version?
Original, yeah.
The original, it kind of helps us just pick up what has changed. I'm sure you see it pretty regularly, but we don't. So I would appreciate that in the future.
Can I have Jody just explain what the major changes are?
Yes.
Yep, so the amended contracts are in response to policy changes. So we had three policies that we have revised, policy 400.00, 403.0 and 303, two of which were approved in the second reading tonight. The only update to the contracts, the 279 contracts, which is item A, would be changing out the signature. So going from Katie's signature to Dr. Pruitt's signature. And then also in that rich policy discussion, we committed to adding a sentence on the 279 contracts that said that they would not be final or binding until received by the board. So we will be able to issue those contracts. They will, the names of the hires will still come to you on the personnel report. And that will not be, the contract will not be, in fact, binding until that approval. On item B, I'll just talk about that. So you have that information ahead of time. Those letters of assignments are all at will employees. And so the change on that would be, again, Dr. Pruitt's signature, with the exception of the administrator letter of assignment. We kept the language final or binding until received by the board on the letter of assignment that goes to administrators, managers, et cetera.
And I know, thank you, Jody, that's helpful. I know that we received that information in a Friday board update, maybe a couple of weeks ago. It's just sometimes like time and space between when we get that information and when it comes in front of us amongst all this other stuff. Sometimes makes it, makes it challenging or we have to go back. Sometimes just seeing it in front of us would be helpful. So in the future, if we could see those red lines, I think that would be helpful. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item B, can I have a motion to approve the amended letters of assignment as recommended?
Motion, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item C, can I have a motion to approve the SBRC modified supplemental amount for fiscal year '25 special education deficit of $6,685,357.33 as recommended?
Motion, second.
Any questions? I, I just really appreciated that spreadsheet that came with it. I think it's the clearest version of what I've looked at since I've been on the board. Now, you're probably going to tell me I've seen the exact same one six other times, but I don't know if it just hit me right, but I appreciated being able to see how that worked. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item D, can I have a motion to approve the SBRC modified supplemental amount for fiscal year '25, limited English proficient allowable excess cost of $294,394.33 as recommended?
I think you said it wrong.
$396.
Guys, every time I read the dollar amounts, I think, this is the hardest part of being a board president. And I mean that, reading the dollars is very challenging.
Director Claus, can you read the whole thing?
Yeah, we'd be happy to. I'll try to get it right. May I have a motion to approve the SBRC modified supplemental amount for fiscal year '25, limited English proficient allowable excess cost of $294,396.33 as recommended?
Motion, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item E, can I have a motion to approve Cottingham and Butler Insurance Services, LLC as the broker of record for the Ankeny Community School District as recommended?
Motion, second.
Questions or comments here?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions on this one, more from, I guess, best practice perspective. But when we sent in a question about this, asking if we had considered other or gone truly through an RFP process to make a change to a pretty big partnership with our broker? And the answer was no. I think that was surprising. And especially somebody in, you know, with my background and experience and knowing, and Eric, you correct me if I'm wrong, but our benefits have got to be two or three top expense for our district, I'm assuming. It's a bigger expense. And so I just was surprised that we didn't go to full RFP, knowing that that helps give you leverage to potentially lower your commissions and other costs that come from your broker. So that, I just wanted to share that that was a surprise. I know with other contracts, when we, and I know we don't have a policy on this, but with other contracts that are this significant, we would typically send it to multiple parties. So I just wanted to point that out, that it was, I think it was a little just surprising that we didn't do that.
Other questions?
I have a kind of a tailwind to that stuff. Like, we don't have a policy, but is there anything in Iowa code? I'm just wondering, do we have to give the opportunity for somebody, like a broker, to compete for those public dollars?
Not for services.
Not for services? Just for constructions? Okay. So then my, my follow-up question is, how do we know for sure or confident that we're getting the best price that we can if we didn't go out for the service bid?
I'm going to ask Ms. Graham to just provide an overview of what took place and how she came to the recommendation to me to go with Cottingham Butler.
Thank you. First and foremost, knowing that this is a public meeting and we have staff that are listening, this meeting is recorded and accessible. I do think it's really important that I have the opportunity to explain for additional context and clarity and transparency. A little over 10 days ago, the board received a letter outlining the district's rationale for proposing the necessary, the change in our insurance broker. The intent of that communication was to provide the board with necessary background to support our decision while also avoiding a discussion of a specific vendor partnership in a public setting, as these decisions often involve personnel, performance, and longstanding relationships. The district has had a longstanding relationship with Mark Becker and Associates, a partnership that I would say was built on trust, transparency, and a shared commitment to serving the best interest of Ankeny schools. That partnership was established long before I've been part of Ankeny. Mark Becker and Associates was acquired by Gallagher in 2021. We had the opportunity to continue working with the same team. And we, we had that same positive working relationship the last few years. This spring, significant staffing changes occurred. Two key members of the service team retired and two others left Gallagher. We were assigned a new broker team, not once, but twice. Since those changes, we have experienced a noticeable decline in engagement. The newly assigned team has met with the district only once in the last six months. And there has been minimal follow-up or strategic input. I think that this has left that our, our benefits team and our service to employees in question because we've not had that support. The lack of support has, has really been something that has caused us to question on how we best serve the needs of our employees. I really focused on five key points. I outlined that in my communication to you. And I think it's important to share that publicly tonight. The first one is customer service and relationship strength. Ankeny already has a strong relationship with Cottingham and Butler. And this has been evidenced through our work with their total rewards team and their work comp team. My evaluation with Cottingham and Butler spans over a four-year term. I have had different interactions with them the last four years because of those previous two partnerships. I also engaged with my Iowa HR network. Specifically, I connected with a neighboring metro district that currently partners with Cottingham and Butler to gather firsthand feedback. Their input emphasized Cottingham and Butler's exceptional responsiveness, their collaborative approach, and their strong understanding of district-level challenges. The second component for me was identifying a partner who was a strong strategic fit and who would be a long-term partner to us. Again, we already had, we currently have strong competitive benefit package. And we know that based upon our employee survey that we do annually. And we know this based upon data that we receive quarterly from Blue Cross Blue Shield. We don't want to commit to status quo. We want to continue to be forward-thinking and to be innovative. And you heard a lot about that tonight through the academic side. That is true on the employee side as well. I want a partner who's going to push us on our continuous improvement, one that's going to help us with cost constraints. And I'm looking for somebody who strategically helps us plan for long-term sustainability. I believe all of those things are true based upon my current interaction and relationship with Cottingham and Butler. The third component that makes Cottingham and Butler a good fit for our district is their depth of expertise. This past May, we had a very complex employee situation that involved work comp and FMLA. And the Cottingham and Butler risk management team brought in multiple experts from different departments to help us problem-solve that situation as it related to compliance. That interaction gave us a personal and in-depth look at their dedication of problem-solving and how they provide support to their partners. They offer robust resources across multiple domains that we currently don't have access to. Those include wellness, medical management, technology, HR consulting, Medicare, et cetera. Fourth, they are an industry leader. They have regional expertise. They're involved in the Iowa School Business Officials and the Iowa Superintendent Finance and Leadership Consortium. They have deep familiarity with the Iowa Insurance Division. They currently serve 28 school districts in the region. And lastly, advantageous for Ankeny, there is no increase in the broker fees for us for the next 15 months. They have an annual increase of 3% that we've negotiated to begin. to begin 15 months after the original signing of the contract. That is normally applied every January of a contract continuation. I believe that they have an enhanced service model, that they'll offer deeper collaboration with both our total rewards and our risk management partnerships. And I think they align to the goals that we're focusing on in benefits in terms of redesigning our non-medical benefits, enhancing some of the issues we're struggling with right now with billing systems, benefit technology, and overall our employee experience. So that is a little bit of a context of what has been happening behind the scenes.
Yeah, I, I appreciate the context around why we were looking to move. I think that's helpful for us to have, especially given the history that we've had with, I don't, the Gallagher Group. I don't want to say it incorrectly, is that the right name? And that they were bought out. I think we're the, and I appreciate the criteria that you use to make that determination. I think that's helpful. I think what is challenging is recognizing that we didn't allow other places to be held up to that certain criteria to determine if that, if Cottingham and Butler would hold up in all five of those areas relative to others that we were considering. So other comments or questions?
I guess I just ask a general question, like, do you think as a board, that's something we need to look at in policy?
Well, potentially, if we're not going to do it. I mean, if we're not going to, so we, we were able to not get an increase in our commissions and fees, which is great. But what if we could have gotten a decrease if we would have talked to other partners and they would have offered that? That's the part I think that is, when we're dealing with the numbers that we are with this decision, I think that is something we need to consider. If, if that's like not the practice that we're just going to naturally follow.
And let me ask, was, was timeline an issue? Is this a big market? Are there a lot of places that do what they do? Like, is there any more context?
I, as I mentioned, I conferred with the Iowa HR group and most of them had, fell into kind of three different partnerships. Gallagher, Cottingham and Butler, and then a third one that was somewhat unfamiliar and not utilized by many of the larger metro schools.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
So is that something the policy, is that something we have to decide if it changes into policy? Or is that a later conversation? Or, how is that?
I don't, I don't know that we've ever.
Don't know.
So I think.
We want to add new policy.
Yeah.
We have it in construction for construction bids, but we don't have it right now for, and it sounds like we don't need, and code only doesn't dictate it for services. So as a board, keep me honest, we would have to like say for like a big change like this.
Correct, it's something we could add to policy.
It'd be like a threshold or something, like if it's a contract threshold over like $60,000. Because I think the annual fee on this is 60 grand a year, is what I did the math.
Yep. 60 grand is part of the cost.
Right, is what the broker, the broker monthly fee, I took that $5,000 that we previously approved in this meeting. Something to think about for policy.
So.
I think we can do some research on if anything we need to do.
So how about Steph and I connect about what might be some next steps with Dr. Pruitt? We might reach out to Melissa and just think about what might be, connect with Melissa on it. I guess that's where I'll put a period at the end of that.
Sounds good.
Okay. Come back to the team from there. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.